The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Just wanna welcome you all to this regular board meeting for January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. We'll start with the roll call. Kinsey?
Smith? Here. Becker?
Here.
McCoy? Here. Leighton Warren? Here. Welch? Here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
All board members are present. We're also joined at the table by two members of our intercity student council. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Good evening. My name is Macy Saha. I'm a senior at Preble and I'm the president of InterCity Student Council.
My name is Nachia. I am from West and I am a freshman from InterCity Student Council.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and free to the liberty and justice for all.
Brian, are you in? Okay, could someone please read the mission statement? Go ahead Nancy.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. Next time the agenda is our land acknowledgement statement, which I will need. We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities. Okay. Next is our open forum. We'll first start with the intercity student council report.
Okay, well, at East, they are starting their preparations for Silent Night and their Rhapsody won the best show for their music program. Their winter sports are going well and their Muslim Student Association group is hosting a fundraiser where they sell small and few food. And so ensemble performances are being finalized. At J D A L, they are beginning to pick their volunteer projects for this semester. And at West, their Silent Night will be this Saturday and the student council is hosting a snowball dance on February eighteenth.
At Southwest, they're beginning their spring play. Boys and girls basketball teams have been playing well. A pep band performed at their first basketball game so far this season last week. And then at Preble, Key Club is hosting a donation drive for the Golden House. Student council had a staff appreciation breakfast last Friday. Finals were last week and first semester just ended, so we started second semester today. And then show choir performed in New London over the weekend and we have a spirit week this week because then Winterfest is on Saturday.
Very good. Thank you. Next is our public forum. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, then we'll move on to this consent agenda. Would someone like to read the motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm going to request that item GB removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other items to remove? Okay, I think we can go ahead and vote on the remainder. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Kinsey, it's a passball that I vote verbally with it and you can record it.
Brian, do you wanna?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, would someone like to read the motion for G? Open enrollment space designation.
I move that the open enrollment space designation is presented be approved. Second.
Okay, any discussion and questions? Andrew?
So although this is a repeat, this is a repeat vote that had to fall within a certain timeline. I'm still voting no on this. I it's philosophical. All districts should be should be accepting all kids and I understand that there could be potential difficulties if one district didn't. I also think there could be potential opportunities, but my position has always been to vote no on setting open enrollment space designations to zero.
Anybody else? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Kinsey?
I'll do a voice vote on this one. McCoy?
Aye.
Smith? Aye. Mills?
Aye.
Welch? Aye. Becker?
No.
Leighton Warren? Aye. Lyerly?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you, Kinsey. Onto number five, action items. Would someone, under A, contracts, would someone please read the motion?
I move that the issuance of contracts is outlined under Wisconsin statute section one hundred and eighteen point twenty-four for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year is presented be approved. Second.
Okay, discussion. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Brian, you still need to vote verbally?
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is purchase of sentijigs and single wire. Would someone like to please read the motion?
I move that the purchase of, is it sentijigs?
Sentijigs?
I say it wrong all the time too. So I move that the purchase of sentijigs and single wire as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions, discussion? Go ahead.
We first learned of the proposed one point eight-two-five million dollar purchase of sentijigs security system two weeks ago. We subsequently learned that the annual license fee for this software after the first five years is seven thousand eight hundred dollars per school per year, an annual cost of about three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars per year. We heard that the Charlotte Mecklenburg School District backed out of the purchase due to problems with the security system in or around April of twenty twenty. First, I am for anything we can do to make our schools safer. That said, I also believe that whenever possible, we should pursue competitive bids for major expenditures. Therefore, I would ask that we defer the agenda item until we can further explore this proposal. Also take the time to compare the value of this system and its additional cost against the items we will need to cut to cut to meet our budget in the near future.
Need further discussion?
Okay, Josh, the licensing after the five years, is that able to be capitalized or does that come out of the operational budget?
Comes out of the operational budget. If we choose to renew, right? Because the procurement policy would require us to bring a renewal of that size back to the Board of Education.
Go ahead.
So if we don't choose to renew, that means we spent one hundred or one point eight million on the base of it and then we wouldn't renew it?
We would, it would not renew the service. The hardware would remain installed.
Can you use the hardware without the renewal of the license?
Amy, do you know the answer to that question?
I don't believe so. I would assume, well, it's a really good question. We might be able to use the badges to communicate with the strobes, but we wouldn't have the dashboard and all the data behind it for sure.
Go ahead, Brian.
Is there any risk to us postponing this to the next meeting?
But certainly delays the implementation timeline. Our first first implementation meeting is tomorrow morning. I wouldn't say that's insurmountable. Amy, what is the current timeline?
Yeah, so we would have this rolled out into our buildings between ninety and a hundred and twenty days after the P O is submitted. And we do have our first implementation, like Josh stated, on schedule for tomorrow. The focus will tonight.
Andrew, did you have a question?
Yes, I would I move to postpone this item until the February thirteenth board meeting where if necessary, could be a short special meeting. That's my motion is to postpone to February thirteenth. This is a privileged motion because it's to postpone consideration.
I need a second.
A second?
Okay, any discussion about this additional motion amendment? Go ahead, James.
So when Nancy was reading her statement, I was struck by the fact that I did not necessarily learn that at the working session and I think that some of the information is new to board members of this evening, but I do remember putting a question to the district about costs and I am struck that I am caught kind of unaware that we were being charged a per building cost at the amount. I think that was a fact that was well communicated during Alaska. So I absolutely agree to the motion to postpone so that we can, because it is a much larger annual expense now that I'd like a little bit more time to consider.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
If we were to start putting this out in our buildings, would we be putting it in buildings that will not even be around in a year or two? You know, because we're talking about possible closures and things?
That's a great question. Sentijigs and single wire have both agreed that if we put this in a building that is not around, say, three or four years from now, they would take that money and put it toward our renewal. So we wouldn't lose out, but it would save us in year six or seven going forward.
Go ahead.
Also, when I was speaking to someone who I feel has a great knowledge about systems and they have actually gone to schools in our state. And one thing that they always came out with was there's always a human factor to these types of devices. And one of the things he said was, you know, talking to the principal at the school, he was looking into, well, where do you keep your badge? Oh, in my desk, you know, and things like that. And then some of the teachers who heard about this, they asked me about what happens if a student grabs your badge because that happens often in elementary school and or you lose it and just the whole idea of badges. You know, and how responsible do the teachers, if they lose it, what's the cost or if if a student pushes the buttons, what's, how does that all work?
I do have some sample badges in my office. If you'd like to see what those look like, it is fairly difficult to not intentionally hit those buttons, especially as many times as it takes to lock it down. I guess if it's, if it's the board's desire to take this to the thirteenth, I'd like to make sure that I have a comprehensive list of questions so that I can make sure you have all the information you need to make a decision at that point. I think it's likely we'll have referendum related purchases anyways on the thirteenth, so I'd likely be requesting a quick special board meeting anyway. But yeah, I want to make sure that you have all the information you need to make your decisions.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions that concerns? Go ahead, James.
So as part of Nancy's first motion, she was indicating that the desire to have a competitive bid process. A question was also asked in the working session and the answer was the uniqueness of this system made it difficult to pursue a competitive bid. And that's, you know, that's what kind of informed my decision. Before the thirteenth, we're not going to be able to go out to competitive bid. So is that going to be an aspect of people's decision? Because that's just not feasible to perform.
I do wanna, yeah, I would like to make sure that the board understands due to the uniqueness of the solution that some I mean, we were looking for solutions and actually single wire was one we thought would be a competitor and it turns out they use they just integrated the sentijig solution, right? The the uniqueness would be the ability to wirelessly deploy the strobes, right? Most solutions require running CAT six cable all over your building so that upfront cost is huge in forty-three buildings. And and because of the easiness to deploy and the relatively low cost per unit, we're able to get the solution in more areas. Our desires to get strobes into any place where we may have hearing impaired staff member or student or in area where the size or the noise going on is makes it difficult to hear P A announcements.
Hey, a conference voice in the background, but that's sole source letter from sentijigs that we can share on this.
She's got a sole source letter, I think is what she was saying. I'm not sure what's going on with the audio there.
I'm sorry, can you explain that again?
Yeah, so it's, it's a letter that, that basically affirms the uniqueness of the solution and explains why competitive bids are are difficult. You know, it's, it's not like buying, you know, I've sat up here and and asked for money for computers before, right? Where we say, we want twenty thousand Dell Chromebooks. Then that becomes a lot easier. The solution's part more complex. It's not, there's not really an apples to apples comparison.
Andrew?
So what, I mean, what is there about, is it specifically the badges that made sentijigs unique?
The badging is unique for for B, we all see this from different perspectives, right? There's the perspective of a classroom teacher. There's a perspective of an administrator who's responsible for district-wide safety and security. From my perspective, it was the ability to rapidly deploy the strobes, make sure that we are getting those strobes into places where they're needed and the ability to centrally manage a centrally manage a building situation that required people in the building or people coming to the building to be aware that something's up, right? Right now, we have over the course of several years, many different hodgepodge systems that are different in each school. So this was an opportunity to kind of unify unify that system. But yeah, certainly from a teacher's perspective and that was a unique thing about this sort of solution is that was the badging system and probably, I think they said ninety percent, over ninety percent of the activity typically is the quick, I need, I need someone down here in my room or this hallway kind of alert. But most, most like strobe systems are not focused on that kind of service. They're more focused on making light noise.
Um, so you've mentioned this hodgepodge of systems that we have in our schools right now. Are some of those, I have a couple of questions about that. Are some of those reaching their kind of their natural, the end of their natural lifespan? And are we paying for systems right now that would be eliminated if we take on this system?
To my knowledge, we are not paying for any systems that would be eliminated. Is that right, Amy?
Yeah, I think you're correct. The system, single wire, would allow us to integrate into some of our current systems, making them a little more uniform across the district. So like our P A systems, for example, or our phones or our displays, which is especially important in buildings such as D O B and A S B where we do not have P A systems.
That interests me, that this, that this could be integrated with systems that are already in place.
Yeah, they, I mean, they did give an example where it can even be integrated with the radios at the school. So you've been out at schools and seen people carrying the radios around. You could have single wire send a message when there's a staff alert saying, Mrs. Jones in room three-ten requests assistance and have it come through the radio.
How is uniformity? Can you give me like an example or two or maybe Amy of how this uniformity helps our district just generally?
I think it definitely helps when we have traveling staff so that they know what's happening in one building happens in another building. You know, the processes, procedures are the same. It also helps us centrally to support our buildings, right? And we also have S R O officers that support multiple buildings. So for them to have the same process and procedures throughout is beneficial, I think, as well.
Right, when there's a crisis, the last thing the last thing you want is someone thinking, oh, I happen to be at this school, so what do I do? Right? That shouldn't be a part of the thought process.
When we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, did we talk about other districts using this product?
Yes, yep, we did. We did reference checks with existing customers.
Okay. Can you talk about that just a little bit again or maybe Amy like? And what, like, what did that look like or what was their feedback?
Yeah, I mean, they were glowing. We talked to two districts. One that had a completed implementation and one that was in the middle of implementation. Both were in the southeast. I remember one being in County. I don't recall the the name of the other one. I believe they were both in Georgia. Yeah, they're, they were glowing.
Yeah, Josh, if you want me to share a few, they have, they specifically asked like, what did you do before and then what do you do now and your thoughts about it? So there are a lot of people that spoke about yelling for help down the hallway or using their cell phone or trying to get a student involved, like why send a student to some, to another teacher? And in the end, they all talks about how the badge is easy to use. Very glad to have in place for emergencies. Way of contacting to their main district office, a lot of ease of use. I like the badge. Every moment counts in an emergency. Lots of positive feedback, rating it from one to ten, most rating it just from a quick scroll, I'm seeing a lot of tens and then some seven eights.
Yeah, so that would be the experience of individual teachers that have used the system. The references I was discussing, I was talking to I T directors. That was before Amy started.
Okay.
This has been going on for a while.
Go ahead, Brian.
Recognizing that, you know, we still have the motion for postponing it, I just wanna add a couple of things with it. I was questioning the need for this when we had our last meeting and the fact that we it's my understanding through the email that you sent, we would be able to see specific data as far as in buildings where situations are happening. And I believe that we would still be able to see response time and who is responding to these concerns. Am I correct on that? That was in the
Yeah, we can, yep, it shows the teacher that used the badge and then the person that closes the response gets to note what the response, like what they were responding to. We can set those categories up on a district level. So again, those are uniform throughout.
And we'd be able to see response time?
Oh, response time, that is a fantastic question. I would have to go back and look at my notes. Response time, I think, is going to be difficult because it could be I see the alert on my phone or my computer. I notice it is going to be different from the time to I actually got to the situation.
Well, I think that's a key component that we I would assume this program would be able to do it. So we're able to recognize and especially in buildings where we have more challenging behavior taking place, who's responding, how long it is, and that'll give us some really valuable data as far as behavior plans and interventions on it. I think that's, that's a necessary component for it. I would assume it, I mentioned this during the last meeting, I would assume it's like when you press the button at Fleet Farm and they've got a timer going and someone hits a button, a very similar response that they should be able to track from the time that it was hit to the time that someone To the time that someone responds to it and and the location on that. Is definitely something that I think would be valuable for our district, especially as we're looking at improving behaviors and. To be honest with with a budget deficit that we're looking at. Where we're getting good responses as far as student behavior and time, so.
Okay. Andrew.
I guess my. My question, which I think will be relevant for, you know, me thinking about this over the next few weeks and then getting the additional information. My question about what makes this unique was more. High level, like what what are they the only thing doing that makes them a single source? Is it bad thing? Is it integration with strobes?
Andrew, I can answer that for you. I'll share this letter. Either in the updates this week so that you can actually see the full letter, but. Their quick bullet points. Wearable wireless staff alert button for all employees with integrated silent acknowledgement without the need to ever recharge. The wearable button providing the two different levels of alerts. So the three click, just I need assistance versus the eight click emergency. It doesn't require the staff members to download an app or use their mobile phone. Immediate notification to the incident location. Including both the multi floor and then inside and outside. The multi sensory notification, so having the seven different color options so that we know blue means. You know, whatever we designated to red means something, so on and so forth. It works off of. It does not need to work off of the Wi Fi or cellular networks. And then how Josh talked about the battery powered components versus the wired components.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that you guys get this letter.
Nancy.
So you you mentioned Hen Henry County. Okay, so is that the only place? That you have talked to that has had it fully implemented? And you know, the Mecklen, Charlotte Mecklenburg thing, that was an actual lawsuit because of all that went wrong. And you showed me. The, you know, the finality of what they did. But it didn't have a date on, and I was wondering how long that had been going on and things like that.
Yeah, that settled in, I believe, September of twenty twenty. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. There were a. There were. Several things that I can prepare for the board there, but it appeared the two big issues were that first, the implementation started under one superintendent. A new superintendent came in. That that didn't, they did want to complete it, so they were looking for a way out of their contract, and there there appeared to be a misunderstanding. In Charlotte Mecklenburg that they thought that the devices were tracking. The teacher's location at all times, which we've already said we don't want to do and the and the system can't do. So those were the the two main things.
Well, what I read in the articles was that the the devices were actually like falling out of the ceilings and stuff. Did you read about that at all?
Yes, I've got some additional information for you.
Any further discussion?
But I would, I would say we're, we would be the first customer in Wisconsin, and we're a fairly big fish. I would be. I would be. Pretty shocked if they hadn't learned from that experience.
But the only other thing is that you know, if only at one other place that is actually getting it right now. So. In the reading that I did, one group said that they felt they didn't want to be, you know, trying out something that might get improved or. You know, be one of the first that way. You know, get the bugs out before we do it.
I think we got to remember that we're on a motion here in that. You know, this is a company that. Is doing business, and if we haven't had the sources and stuff about it that we're in an open meeting, so the concern with that, so.
I guess, thank you for pointing that out. I agree. Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
Okay, then when do we do this?
When all discussion is done?
No, when do we discuss? Like what you're saying, like, see, that's what I'm missing, like, I don't, when do we make this discussion happen? Like, I wouldn't have known about the that article except somebody sent it to me. And then that made me think more, and I had already decided on it after talking to my people. I said, okay, you know, if you feel. You know, but then that was the person that talked about the human factor is always going to be there. And I thought, oh, well, okay, if this. And then I got started getting this, and then I got more things from other people. And I thought, when do we do this research then or talking? I don't. You know. Do you know what I'm asking?
I'm not sure if I follow you, but the for for this meeting's purposes.
Right.
We should probably address this, the motion that Andrew made. Has been seconded. About delaying this for a month. Or no. Two weeks, the thirteenth. Are we? Ready to take that vote? Okay. We should probably, what what is the? What is the motion again?
The motion is to delay consideration of the. Main motion until February thirteenth.
Okay. All right, I think we're ready to vote on that. I'll do a voice voice vote for this one. Lyerly.
Aye.
Clayton Warren.
Aye.
Becker.
Aye.
Welch.
Aye.
Mills.
No.
Smith.
Aye.
McCoy.
No.
Motion passes five to two. Okay. If you have, Nancy, if you have further questions, I would. Yeah, I think that we can, we can do that in a different in a different venue. And we'll take this up again on the thirteenth.
Yeah, and I'll I'll work for through Vicky then to make sure that and Melissa to make sure we're getting you the information you need. I'm just. We'll need to figure that out.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just have one one comment on the human factor that you brought up. Regarding badges being in desks and things like that. I think that that is going to be a change. However, we expect our middle schoolers. To have their badges on or they have to go to the back of the lunch line or pay for a replacement. And so I think, and I'm also someone that if I don't have my badge, I can't get into my office. So I think it's just going to take a little while, and there has to be some some learning adjustment, but I I believe that we could all do that, especially if we know the value of it. We'll get used to it everyone will.
It is it is district policy to wear and display your badge at all times.
Okay. All right, then we're going to move on to. See. Purchase of uninterrupted power supply. Would someone like to read the motion, please?
I move that the purchase of uninterrupted power supply as presented be approved.
Second. Okay. Any questions, any discussion? Nancy? Online voting is now open.
I'm putting aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next item, D Southwest High School Tennis Court. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the Northeast Asphalt Corporation be awarded the bid for the tennis court reconstruction project at Southwest High School. In the amount of eight hundred eighteen thousand four hundred fifteen dollars as presented be approved.
Second. Any discussion? Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, I'm sorry you haven't seen this one before because we just got the. The bids in between these last couple of meetings. This is a little bit of an easier procurement than the one we were. Discussing earlier. We do have competitive bids here. And we have a. We have a responsible responsible bidder that. That has a low price.
Go ahead, Nancy. And so, Josh, we're going to see a lot of these because this is basically like the playground equipment thing, right? Where it'll come up just like that.
Yes, these are referendum funds. We're working every day to try to. Get get this stuff done. And just for. I know that the the sticker price is larger than you'd expect for tennis courts. This is not a reserving, and it's a complete reconstruction of the tennis courts with. Southwest tennis courts needs some major work.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I think we're ready to take a vote. Online voting is now open.
Aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay. With that, that that is the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website. W W W dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.